I may. I have one job.
You do not have one job.
You are a gentleman and a scholar.
Everyone ready? Mr. Glassberg. Good evening. I have that professor voice that will command the room. Good evening, I call to order the September ninth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Metatchen Board of Education. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Aliyevich, notice of the meeting, please.
I hereby make this statement to indicate compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act known as Chapter two three one of the Public Laws of New Jersey nineteen seventy five, which became effective ninety days after enactment, January nineteenth nineteen seventy six. Notice of this meeting was provided, was given by providing the location, time, and date of this meeting, and posting of the same on the front door of the Board of Education offices by delivering copies to the Borough Hall and the Metatchen Public Library, the Home News and Tribune, the Star Ledger, and by filing a copy with the Borough Clerk as prescribed by this law.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Mr. Bott.
Here.
Ms. Cheatham.
Here.
Mr. Dervlinger.
Here.
Mr. Glassberg.
Here.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Here.
Ms. Colleen.
Here.
Mr. Lifton.
Here.
Ms. Michaels Lamorte.
Here.
Dr. Spigner.
Here.
Mr. Suss.
Here.
Wonderful, thank you. Dr. Caputo, we have one of our Fun Show Case of Successes today.
We do, as we do at the beginning of most years and throughout the year when we hire new folks, we like to introduce our new teachers who have started with us. They are approved on prior board meetings, we like to introduce them publicly to the, to the public and the board at a meeting, and we're fortunate we have seven staff members with us tonight, so I have them in alphabetical order by last name. I'll call them up to the podium, I'll introduce them by their name and what job they're in, and I'll ask them to say a few words, as little as, you know, thanks, I'm happy to be here, or they may have a little more to say, may have a story to tell us, so we're really happy that you took your time out after a busy workday to join us tonight. Thanks, Ms. Taylor, always for putting our group together and for organizing that. First up tonight, we have Rihanna Anderson, she's at Campbell School Leave Replacement, she'll be starting with us in November.
Hi, everyone, thank you so much. I'm very excited to start my position at the end of October at Campbell School. I was a third grade teacher North Plainfield before I had my children, so I'm really excited to go back to third grade. I've been subbing in Metatchen schools for the last year or so, and I love subbing at Campbell and all around the district, and so I'm really excited for this opportunity, so thank you very much.
Welcome. Welcome.
Next up, we have Alicia Fernandez, she'll be, also be a Campbell Leave Replacement teacher. She is a Campbell Leave Replacement teacher.
Hi, everyone, I am a Metatchen mom myself, born and raised in Metatchen, went through the whole school district, taught kindergarten and private daycare for nine years, and just happy to get back in the classroom with the second graders. It's been going good so far, so I'm just happy to be here, thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
Next up is Amy Fittaris, she's Edgar School, P E and Health.
I am not a Metatchen mom, but I am a mom. So I come here with lots of years of experience, I'm really excited to come to Metatchen. I don't live so far, so I know this area very well, and I'm really excited, it's a place I really wanted to be. Besides being a teacher, I'm also a soccer and track referee, I do high school soccer, I do high school track, I do college soccer, which is where I just was twenty minutes ago, so sorry for the attire, I would have dressed up more, but I'm also a phys ed teacher. So I come in with a lot of knowledge of kids and handling stuff, and I'm really excited to be here. And I've had a great time with the kids so far, and I love the smiling faces, I love seeing them want to run. So it's exciting.
Thanks.
Wonderful, welcome.
Next we have Robin Gill, who's an Edgar Leave Replacement teacher with us.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Robin Gill. First of all, I'm really honored to be back in Metatchen because this was the first job I had fresh out of college. September of twenty twenty, I believe, I was hired as an E L A Leave Replacement at Edgar, and so nearly five years later, I'm back, and I look forward to the rest of my time here at Edgar. Hopefully something else opens up down the line.
Welcome back. Welcome back. Next up is Deborah Lee, Edgar School Leave Replacement teacher.
Hi, good evening, Dr. Caputo, good evening, Dr. Herzog, and Word of Ed, I'm nervous, yes, I'm nervous too, that too.
All good.
I do remember my name, it's. My name is Deborah, but I do go by Debbie. Currently, I am the fifth, one of the fifth grade Leave Replacement teachers. Initially, I, I was the last hire of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year, and I was actually hired twice. I was initially hired to be a para at Edgar Middle School, and then I was emailed a few days later after accepting the position about a leave replacement. So, a little confused, I had, I mentioned, you know, I accepted a position for the school already, does that affect, will that affect my hire? Because after a certain time for a leave replacement, then it's officially finished, so. After a lot of confusion on my end, it was, I was, it was clarified that after this long-term position ends, I would be going to be a para. I'm very excited, I've gotten to already know the children in the classroom in the fifth grade, and we're already jumping right into learning about community. We've started our first novel, and also today, the children learned how to be a good citizen in, within the, within the community with somebody who were to have a disability. Coming from a background of myself, because I do have a disability, they learned how they can be helpful, not just to me, but to their friends if they see something, if they were to see something that needed medical attention, so they were super excited. They worried because they're, they're so small, they're fifth grade, but they were worried and they had so many questions, and I said, you can ask me all the questions you want, but that tells me that you are so eager to learn how to be community helpers within the community already, and that is what learning is about, and until their teacher comes back, I would help them and guide them. The dream, I'm very excited to be finally making a break within Metatchen School District. I have Dr. Caputo and Dr. Herzog already know, I've dedicated my life to teaching. My most recent assignment was in Princeton, but I am super excited because Metatchen is a whole lot of a better commute. And so I'm really excited, I've already been introduced to my mentor, and she's an amazing mentor, and I'm already learning a lot, so I'm super excited as to what this school year will bring.
Fantastic, thank you so much, welcome.
Next up is Rebecca Pareto, Campbell School, fourth grade.
Hi, everyone, I am Metatchen born and bred, I haven't been in this auditorium in twenty years, so this is pretty cool. I'm really excited to have a permanent position in fourth grade teaching E L A in an I C R classroom. I had a different career, got married, moved back to Metatchen, had a baby, and then decided teaching was the route to go, especially as a mom now, so I am a Metatchen mom, my kid is too young to go to Metatchen schools yet, but six days into the school year, we have an awesome class, we are doing great, and I'm just really excited for the rest of the school year.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, welcome.
And finally tonight, Julia Sudol, Edgar Special Education.
Hi, everyone, good evening, my name is Julia Sudol, I am at Edgar, I'm teaching in-class resource for fifth, seventh, and eighth grade. Prior to my time in Metatchen, I was in East Brunswick for a few years. Metatchen has always been a dream district of mine, so I am so excited to get to be a part of it. The community here is amazing, I love where I am working, working with the students of all different ages. We've had a great start to the school year, and I'm excited to keep going.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you, welcome, welcome to all of you.
Yes, that's it.
All right, thank you. And we have reports, but we'll let you all get home because we know you've had a long day already, thank you so much.
Open first.
Sorry?
Open first. Before we.
Thank you.
It's okay.
Oh, my goodness.
No, it's over here.
All right, see? All right, good people, at this time, we're actually open to the public, I've skipped ahead, but that's okay. I see only one member of the public who is not coming to talk to us, that's all right. You are always welcome to hang out. And at this time, I turn to Dr. Caputo with my question mark, do you have any presentations?
No presentations tonight.
Wonderful, now we go to reports, I have none, I'm assuming.
Yeah, I'll have a short report that I send out tomorrow, just giving the public an update, I'm sure Mr. Glassberg will talk about some of the construction updates. I'll reiterate that in an email tomorrow, we send out the regular morning-after board meeting update for the community. As you heard from our new teachers, six days in, really excited about our new spaces, our new spaces to come, our full-day kindergarten, and it feels like, and I said this to Dr. Herzog on one of our tours through the buildings over these first six days, it feels like we're kind of in mid-season form already, which is really good. There's been good connections made and content already being taught and learned, so good start to the school year.
Wonderful, thank you, Dr. Caputo, I think it's always very exciting this time of school year, and especially given the scope of the projects that we have had within the district. I am so grateful and appreciative to our entire community for their patience and grace, and our students for how they've just rolled with all of it, so it's been fantastic to observe that across the district this, this six days in. So thank you for that. I do not believe any committees had formal meetings since our last meeting, but I know that, as per usual, Mr. Glassberg enjoys making sure that we are up to date with the happenings with respect to construction, so I'll turn it over to you to do that.
I'll actually be pretty briefed tonight.
Okay, just kidding.
So, construction's moving along, we are targeting towards late December to mid-January kind of for completion at the high school, and that should also satisfy the new Moss construction as well, roughly in that area. Air conditioning at Edgar and Moss should be turned on this week.
And Campbell.
And Campbell as well, Edgar, Moss, and Campbell.
Fingers crossed.
Okay, for this week, it's been cool the last couple of days, but still, we would like to check things off and know that they are completed. There was a wonderful video, if you haven't seen it, that Mr. Uleg, our videographer over there, he put together about kindergarten, it was beautiful to see, so many positive comments online, just to see the excitement from the teachers and from the families as well. We've seen and heard some good feedback on the Campbell School Playground, which is up and running, kids are enjoying that from the beginning of school as well. So, a lot of positive things happening, and still more to go, but the finish line is in sight. We do have a meeting on September fifteenth, and that will be the same for finance and also for extracurricular. And then we have an open-to-the-public meeting of the Construction Committee on October sixth. So on October sixth, the Construction Meeting Committee will meet, as we do every other month, open to the public at seven P M. in the Metatchen High School Media Center. That's all that I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Glassberg, and did you conspire with the weather to be cooperative, given that we did not have the easy, fully up and running?
Don't jinx it.
I'm just saying, it's been wonderful, I am commending his maneuvering to make that happen, that's all.
And mostly good outside playing weather, too.
Yes, the kids have really been enjoying the playgrounds, it's been a noticeable joy at pickup. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Michaels Lamorte.
Hi, so I have a few things, so first, for Campbell, Meet the Teachers Night is on September eighteenth. First and second grade Picture Day is on September twenty-fifth, and then third and fourth grade Picture Day is on September twenty-sixth. For Edgar School, Picture Day is on September seventeenth, and then Meet the Teachers is on September twenty-fifth. Okay, and then the high school, September eleventh, which is this Thursday, is Meet the Teacher Night, and I also wanted to, on behalf of all the high schoolers, thank Joe Beckman for coming and giving a presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, I would like to ask everyone if there are any comments or questions on those two reports? Fantastic, any old business from the board? Any new business? All right. At this time, I'd like to move to approve the August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five minutes of the Metatchen Board of Education, is there a second? Mr. Dervlinger, roll call, please, Mrs. Aliyevich? Oh wait, I'm supposed to say more, aren't I? Sorry, just kidding. Special Business Meeting one, Special Business Meeting two, special, uh, listen. As well as the board meeting, now I'd like to ask you, please, Mrs. Aliyevich, to roll call.
Absolutely.
Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Dervlinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen. Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Suss.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, and at this time, the meeting is open to the public on any topic, but seeing still none, I shall move to the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment, and in many cases, unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the Superintendent of Schools. If the Superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate Board Committee. The members of the Board Committee work with administration and the Superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. At this time, I'd like to move the Personnel Items A one through A fifteen, is there a second? Mr. Bott, any comments or questions on the personnel items? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Dervlinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen. Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, turning to Mr. Suss for the finance items.
Yes, I'd like to move Items B one through B seven, is this on the agenda?
Thank you, is there a second? Ms. Cheatham? Any questions or comments?
Oh, I missed it.
I see muttering, but I don't know if there are questions or comments.
Questions or comments? Going once. Okay, roll call, please, Mrs. Aliyevich.
Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Dervlinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson Marcus, I could just stop you for a moment, I, no, there's no question, I had made an error, going back to the Personnel Items. I needed to abstain on Item six, if you could make that note, I'd appreciate it.
Ms. Aliyevich, for Item six, Mr. Lifton.
Under Personnel.
Under Personnel, right, Mr. Lifton wants a change from yes to abstain.
No problem.
Thank you, I apologize.
No worries, gotcha. I'm sorry, I was, I was too quick, I should have waited, I saw you looking.
All right, now I've lost my place.
Did you move yet? No, not yet.
All right, now, all sorted on Personnel, all sorted on.
Finance.
Finance, now we're moving to Policy, Dr. Spigner.
I'd like to move Item C one, as listed on the agenda, please.
Thank you so much, is there a second? Mr. Suss, any questions or comments on the Policy item?
Sure, why have we been letting Ms. Rose Lamorte, Ms. Michaels Lamorte sit here if we're not approving until now?
That is a question for someone else, not your president. All right, any other questions? No? All right, fantastic, roll call, please.
Okay, one moment, sorry. All right, Mr. Bott.
No, just. Yes.
Okay, Ms. Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Dervlinger.
Absolutely.
Mr. Glassberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
So begrudging that, yes.
Yes, enthusiastically, yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you kindly, Mr. Dervlinger, turning to you for Crikey Lim.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to move Items D one through three, as listed on the agenda, please.
Thank you, is there a second? Dr. Spigner, are there any questions or comments on the curriculum items, good people? I shall pause now to give you time. No, seeing none, roll call, please, Mrs. Aliyevich.
Mr. Bott.
Yes.
Ms. Cheatham.
Yes.
Mr. Dervlinger.
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Yes.
Ms. Colleen.
Yes.
Mr. Lifton.
Yes.
Dr. Spigner.
Yes.
Mr. Suss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Aliyevich, we are open to the public on any topic at this time. Seeing no change in the attendance, I shall close this section and move to Mrs. Cheatham for the announcements.
Thank you, I have a relatively lengthy update today, but it's a good one, so stay tuned, I'm going to expand a little bit more on Ms. Michaels.
Can you pull your.
Oh, sorry, I'm going to expand a little bit more on Ms. Michaels Lamorte's explanation into Mr. Beckman, and talk a little bit more about that as the update that I've received. So, before we get there, heads up that the Metatchen P T Council is kicking off their annual fundraiser, so all of your favorite Otis Spunk Meyer cookies and goodies are back. Grades pre-K through four have packets in their backpack, and you can also go to shopfund.com for more information on the fundraiser. It's a good time to stock up for some holiday stocking stuffers, so it's another good way to support the school. In addition to that, this week, we're going to focus on the dedication and support of our P T Os. Metatchen students are, because of that work, are experiencing something truly special. The P T Os were able to bring in National Speaker Joe Beckman, whose mission is to remind students of the power of human connection, resilience, and kindness at a time when young people need it most. Planning for this program began at the end of last year, and after months of coordination, Joe is presenting to every grade at both Edgar Middle School and Metatchen High School. Because of space limitations, the assemblies are divided into four sessions over two days, two at Metatchen High School and two at Edgar, so each presentation could be tailored to the age group. Joe spoke at the high school today, September ninth, and tomorrow, he will bring his message to Edgar students in grades five to eight. His style is energetic, funny, and heartfelt. One moment, the students are laughing, the next, they're reflecting on the deeper importance of kindness, empathy, and staying true to themselves. It's a kind of message that sticks with young people long after the assembly ends, and the energy in the room make, well, was made clear in how deeply the students were connecting to him. Bringing in a national-level speaker like Joe Beckman to Metatchen for eight different grade levels across two schools took significant planning, back and forth, and funding, but it was absolutely worth it. These assemblies remind students that they are seen, valued, and supported not only by their teachers and administrators, but also by their community. Special thanks to Mr. Porowski and Ms. Acevedo for their collaboration in making this possible. This assembly is just one example of the impact of our P T Os have when they invest in opportunities that uplift and inspire. It's more about, it's more than just an event, it's about strengthening the culture of kindness, connection, and belonging that every student in Metatchen deserves, so very big shout thank you to our P T Os for organizing such a tremendous event over the next couple of days.
So, very big shout, thank you to our PTOs for organizing such a tremendous event over the next couple of days. So, that is all I have for today, thank you, and parents, maybe ask your kids what they learned in these assemblies.
Wonderful, thank you very much for the expansion so that we all can go home and ask our, our young people in the middle and high schools, because it's nice when that kind of a message gets spread around the community as well. So thank you for that, Mrs. Cheatham. At this time, I'd like to move to adjourn the meeting, is there a second? Mr. Bott, all in favor? Good night, everyone.